Good evening. Town Council held its regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, May 17th. The following items were addressed. Water treatment. The town remains on bypass. Chlorination readings so far are good. The town is aware of five leaks that require repair. One in the water treatment plant area. One around the hydro building. One around the arena. One at Messers and one on Hare's Hill. The town is waiting on a buster to work on some of these. Now, a buster is a piece of equipment that will help us work through frozen ground. Two are in the area where we will be replacing the line under a Capital Works project. So, we are hoping that they're small enough to hold off until construction begins. Fixing the other three leaks will help us determine how many gallons per minute is leaking out. Government engineers estimate that the tender should soon be ready to go. So, hopefully, in the very near future, we'll see some construction on the main water line. The remainder will be fixed as soon as they can be. The fire department continues with Chase the Ace. There is currently over seventy-one thousand dollars in the pump, in the pumpers fund. Swap and seed applications are now in progress for student summer employment with the town, museum, and walking trail. The Recreation Commission is planning work for resurfacing of the concrete floor area of the arena. There may be a cost overrun owing to the difference of cost of materials and the cost of installation. There was a letter from Sandbanks Park requesting fire services for the park. Council passed a motion in support of this request. Cleanup began May 15th and will continue until May 26th. Sixty-six loads of cleanup have been taken to the waste sites so far. People are reminded not to throw garbage in and around the car dump. Such actions are not only illegal, but they leave a negative impression on the town. Barnell Cole-Janes was in to do the 2016 audit of the town's finances. It was recommended that the town merge all miscellaneous accounts into one GIC. A motion was passed to that effect. Route 480. There was no response from Minister Hawkins on the town's concerns with the area around Long Pond. But the contract has been called for culverts. The town has received thirty-nine hundred dollars. And we carried out a strategic planning day on tourism on May 24th. There were approximately sixty people, which included thirty students, four communities, a couple of businesses. The Halibut Community. And it was led by presenters from the Department of Tourism, Culture, Industry, and Innovation. A motion was passed to accept the funding for that strategic planning day. The museum will open again this year. This is a very important piece for tourists coming into town. The committee who operates the museum and guides summer students is looking for new members. We invite all residents to take part in promoting their community heritage. If you are interested, please contact Deputy Mayor Ingram. Aaron's Arm. There has been a new sign erected. The trail will require some repair, none of which pose a threat to access. There was a request from the Hans Island Committee for a letter of support for their application to the Arts and Heritage Fund. The mayor will write a letter of support on behalf of the town. The Rec Commission has raised over seven thousand dollars towards their resurfacing project. They have also received support of fifteen hundred dollars towards their operational needs from the Community Fund Initiative. The request for funding for walking track was not accepted owing to the cost of insulation. The maximum funding from the Community Fund Initiatives is to the amount of ten thousand dollars. And a track costs between forty thousand and seventy thousand. What was explained to me was that we couldn't break it down to say ten thousand per year for four years in order to get the minimum cost, which would have been forty thousand dollars. Because these are government initiatives and sometimes they run for a year, sometimes they run for two, but they're always indeterminate. And what's expected from this funding, whether it's going to be used for health projects, walking projects, trail projects, and so on, is determined on a year-to-year basis. So, depending on the wishes of the Recreation Commission, the option may be to apply for the curling program that can be accommodated through the existing funding program. So, if interest is expressed by the Recreation Commission, then the town will proceed with an application for that project. Council agreed to provide notepads to the Relay for Life, which is to take place on June 4th. A motion was passed to approve the attendance of staff at a Provincial Municipal Administrators Association meeting on May 16, I'm sorry, on June 16th. It was agreed that the town needs to update its webpage in such a way that it allows the town to make changes on an ongoing basis. The mayor attended a municipalities' Newfoundland Labrador Symposium in early May. Key topics included information on firefighters, access to information, what can and what cannot be disclosed, municipal infrastructure, our provincial municipal outlook, roles and responsibility of municipal councils, wastewater solutions, information on harassment, municipal appeals, and one of the key topics which we will hear about in events that will be coming up over the next year on regionalization. The town motioned to accept an operational water plan founded on one main goal to provide incremental steps focused on reducing water flow rates to maintain good quality water for twelve months of the year and with as little monetary cost to the community as possible. So, the plan will be laid out immediately following the news that I'm providing now. So, if you stay tuned, once I get the town report finished, I'll go through the you know, what has been a tentative water plan. The Building Committee presented a request for approval of three permits, building permits. One for One Anderson Lane to construct a wood shelter. Another for Eleven Harborview Crescent for the construction of a shed. And one on One Reach Place for the construction of a carport. Requests were approved by council. An expression of interest to fly the Halibut flag was tabled. Council will decide on this matter if a request is formally presented. A letter went to Municipal Affairs concerning the town's use of one business, one business's truck over another. It was determined that the truck was, that was used was of no monetary cost to the town and therefore, no conflict had occurred. Council motioned at the acceptance of paying invoices totaling seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The date for our next meeting is June 21st at 7:30 PM. The meeting adjourned at 11:00 PM. The operational water plan. I've been on, on behalf of the town on several occasions and you know, the community is aware that this has been a long-term, ongoing issue. And so, council, like other councils before us, have been working diligently to come up with some sort of resolution that would allow us to run the water twelve months a year without a heavy expense on the, on the community. And here basically is what we know or what we believe to be the case in the town thus far. We know that some of the town do not run their water. We have many households. I often use the one-third, one-third, one-third analogy. But we don't know that for sure. We're guesstimating. But we do know that there are people in the community who do not run their water. We also know that there are others in the community who are running their water conservatively. That they use a straw flow or they maintain a specific flow by using such instruments as a saddle valve. So, they're getting a minimal flow. We also know that some residents are running their water, not because their water might freeze, but because they don't want their sewer to freeze. And we also know that we have people running their water at what we have referred to as a waste level. And by that, I mean taking the balls out of their toilets so that you have a continuous heavy flow. Or have a water pipe taken apart and running the water pipe into their sewer line on a constant basis. We also know that residents have mixed feelings about how best to approach the situation. You know, people have approached me as well as other counselors, as well as the town manager, making suggestions as to how best to, to approach the situation. Some, for example, have, have said they would prefer that we maybe operate the water treatment plant during the warmer months of the year and then go on bypass for the coldest months. And that seems like an easy solution. It's a, you know, an on-and-off switch effect, I guess. What council recognizes in our consultations with engineers and water treatment specialists and our basically the knowledge of our own staff is that you can't turn that plant off and on like a light switch. When you turn it off, then you're getting water that's directly from the pond. And I know that we've used it, you know, for years and years and years. It was fine, nothing saw, no one saw anything wrong with it. But the fact that we put in a water treatment plant is an indication that there was something wrong with it. Some people get low gravity flow, some people get a high level of biofilm. Some sections of town do not receive the adequate amount of chlorination, which means in order to get it out to the end of the line, we have to maybe provide excess, excess chlorination in, in, you know, areas that are closer to the chlorination plant and so on. So, I've gone over these before because one of the sessions we had as a council was to put up all of the possible solutions and then go through the pros and cons. The bottom line was that this, because of the consequences of you know, the cost of maintaining the plant even when it's shut down and the followed effects of having your, you know, your mechanics shut down for a period of time was a clear indication that we can't go that route. That's not counting the legal liability that it places on council's shoulders if, for example, something happened to our water system and we deliberately did not pass it through the, the process used in the water treatment plant. Others have said, you know, we could supply a fifteen-dollar water valve to be placed on everyone's line. And many people that I've spoken to said, yes, the, the water valve, the saddle valve works. We had one person who said that if you get any biofilm in that little hole on the water valve, then it clogs and then your water will freeze and your pipes will break. So, there is an indication there that if you use water valves, you have to check them on an ongoing basis. Some homeowners have taken it upon themselves to conserve water themselves. Some people are using the saddle valves. Some people are using heat tracers. Some people are using styrofoam. Other people have suggested circulating pipes. Others have told us that you can buy the actual water pipe that is already insulated. And so, we know that there are households, matter of fact, there's households in, in progress now who are teaming up if their water line, for example, is shared in through a, an access road, who are getting together and doing things, digging up their pipes and doing things to help their pipes from freezing. We also know that our water usage drops because we've had people say, well, you've got leaks and so we're not the ones running the water. And we agree, yes, we have leaks. We try to seek them out as soon as we can or as soon as someone reports them and seek them out and fix them as soon as we can. But we also have you know, a simple way of tracking in that the gallons per minute are tracked in the water treatment plant on an ongoing basis. And we know that some people have already started water conservation because in the last two or three years, probably, you know, longer than that, but at least in, since I've been mayor, that the summer gallons per minute drop down in the one-hundreds. One-twenty-five, one-fifty, one-sixty. So, that's an indication of reasonable use of water. It's also an indication that water has been shut off during the warm period because in the winter time or even from, let's say, June, July, August, September, October, when it becomes November, we'll see the water gallons per minute climbing to two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred. So, that by February, March, we're up in the seven-hundred bracket. And once we start getting up over five-fifty, we recognize that for a half-million gallon tank, the equipment at the water treatment plant has to be going continuously in order to keep that water tank filled. So, we have been tracking it. And this year, we saw it peak at over a hundred, over eight-hundred and fifty gallons per minute. So, you know, we know when there's, when there's a, an air regular spike that says go, that goes from seven-hundred to eight-fifty, the staff are thinking, well, we have a leak somewhere. So, we know by the spikes, sometimes that leaks are occurring. Now, sometimes it's a gradual leak. But once you get up and you stay there at seven-hundred, eight-hundred, or if you stay at five-hundred, when last year and the year before last, it was down to three-fifty. And I'm playing with numbers here just to give you an example. Then there is an indication that, that there is a leak. So, we do have you know, a simple way of knowing that or guessing that there, there are leaks or water has been shut off because there's usually a consistent record of water flow. We also know that there's only six hundred households in Burjil. So, mathematically, what we would be saying is that every household, for the most part, is using over a gallon per minute, which is about three point eight liters per minute. Now, these are U.S. gallons and U.S. liters. So, if you look up liters online, you might find a different number that I'm using. If you use the American conversion, then that's what it is. And I just want to use it to, to give you an example. Now, I've had people phone and when I've said that before and say, I'm not running my water. And we understand that. But if some people in the town are not running their water, then someone else has got, you know, a big water flow. We also understand from experimentation that we only need to run a liter per minute. That's about a third of a gallon. So, if you had one of those little white beef buckets, a third of that bucket, if you had your tap open to the amount that puts, you know, fills that bucket to one-third in a minute, then you probably have a flow that's going to keep your water from freezing. Now, if we did that, if everyone in town turned on their tap and let it run to, to that amount of one liter, we could successfully operate. We would have no difficulty with operating that plant. We peaked at about eight-seventy, I think it was this winter, and I'll use the number eight-hundred. If we were using eight hundred gallons per minute and every household in Burjil turned on their tap and ran a liter per minute, we would only be running six, two-hundred and sixty-six gallons a minute. And that's very doable. So, everyone, everyone could run their water. So, here were the options that, at least the key options that the town discussed. One was to shut down the plant completely. And I think that's probably a statement out of frustration because we're not the only council that have experienced this issue. Shut it down and go back on the old system. You know, there are people out there who said, there was nothing wrong with the old system. The water was good to drink. Now, that's a matter of, for debate. That for council, if we did that, we would need water treatment specialists and engineers to tell us that we're legally within our right to do that and, and that, you know, we're not going to get slapped with a lawsuit if something happens because we went back on the old system. We could go on bypass for half the year and operate the plant the, the other half. And we went over the, the consequences of that, of paying out that amount of money. Again, looking at, you know, water security issues. We could install homes with saddle valves. Some homes don't need them. Some, some homes don't run their water at all. But then the question is, can the town mandate saddle valves? The answer is no. Can we legally say to homeowners, every homeowner in this town must have a saddle valve in town on their line? The answer is no. Those that have done it have done it on their own accord. The only legal option we have according to the Municipalities Act and hence, whenever we sit down to talk to someone from the government level or from consultancy level, is to put a meter on everyone's line and pay for its use. At about the installation and the meter itself, I'm going to use the number five hundred dollars. It's four hundred and twenty-five for a meter according to what the city of Corner Brook is paying. And then you've got to pay for an electrician. And if it takes twenty minutes, an electrician charges about seventy-five dollars an hour, if they're a certified electrician, then five hundred dollars is a, is a reasonable number, I think. That is a legal option. And while I was discussing it yesterday, no, not yesterday, Friday, sorry, with people out in another community, without saying anything else, talking about our water problems. And of course, the first thing they will say is, put a meter on. So, those are the options that have been discussed intently. Now, what we want to do is, we don't want to be slapping people with a five hundred dollar water meter bill and then saying, if you use, you pay. If you want to flow it, leave it open and flow it, well, you'll, you'll pay for that amount. Now, that's a costly venture. The town doesn't want to do that. That, that isn't where counselors are. Where we want to be is to be able to control our water flow so that A, where homes believe their water is going to freeze, they feel at liberty to be able to run their water reasonably. And so, what we have done as a council unanimously for some steps, not unanimously for, for others, but with a majority vote, we outlined the possibility of eight steps that could be used so that when the fall arrives in 2017, we are not as concerned about our water usage as we have been in past years. So, I'll go down through those steps as quickly as I can because I know this is taking a while. But it is important, I think, for residents to have an understanding of. So, step one. One of the things we would like to do is to do what we're calling a meter project. We, you know, would purchase and monitor four meters on four homes who volunteer. So, it's, it's, it's not mandated by anyone. It's homes who are willing to put these on so that we can see how they function. And that would provide us with the necessary information. You know, how water meters are installed, what the cost of installation is, how they function, what the, the benefits would be. And I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now. When I get to another step, I'll elaborate on that again. So, that's, that's one step. The second is being able to manage our curb stops. We want to work on all curb stops to make them visible, accessible, and clearly marked for town operations. Legally, it's the town's responsibility. The curb, the curb stop is the marker for us for operations from the main water line to the curb stop, which, you know, is the town property. So, if you have any residents who is paving driveways or building driveways, we ask that you make sure that your curb stops are accessible, visible, and accessible. And if anyone has their curb stops paved over or covered up so that the town cannot see them, we ask that you, you know, cut them out. If it's pavement, for example, it's a matter of a square cut around the curb stop so that they are visible and accessible for work. The third step is leak management. We know that we're going to have leaks. We know that we have them now. And basically, what we do is identify them on an ongoing basis and we try to fix them as soon as possible and we will continue to, to do that. The town staff will also isolate sections of town. And what that does for us, if we isolate a specific session, section of town, we can get an we can get an idea of what the flow rates are in that area. Like, there might be twenty-five houses in that area and altogether, they run a certain number of gallons uh per uh per minute. We know that there are going to be leaks. Uh we said that last year when we did the biopurge. That if those pipes uh become clean, as they should, that's the intent of the uh biopurge cleansing is to take all of that uh gunk and dirt that we sometimes get uh through our taps off uh the pipes. Once we do that, if that dirt has been plugging any holes and the pipe becomes clean, then we're going to get leaks. But besides that, our pipes are old and sooner or later, they're going to give out. We usually estimate that a small leak uh will run us about twenty gallons per minute. Some of the larger ones that might be in the eighteen inch line, for example, could run as high as sixty to seventy gallons per minute. So we're trying to get those done as early as possible. Um but what happens is if we shut off a section and we determine that the households are running a certain number of gallons a minute. And we're running over that. Now, I'll try to give you an example. There's twenty-five homes. And I'll go go back to a drawing that one of the councillors gave me. Um if, for example, uh each from from Long Pond uh down to the main water line, we're using three thousand gallons a day. And we have three houses on that line. One is using a thousand and one is using nine hundred and seventy-five, another one is using nine hundred and fifty. We know that the three houses then are using two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five gallons. That's coming from the houses. If we have three thousand gallons coming out, then we know that there's a seventy-five gallon loss. And that's one of the benefits of a water meter. If we know what each house is running and we're running over that, then the town has got to look for leaks because we know it's not the houses. So that's, it's it's an example of, uh you know, how we can help determine where the leaks are. Cause sometimes we we can't. Uh la- I think it was last year, we had um um a city of Cornerbrook worker out with a meter that they have purchased, that's supposed to be top of the line, uh looking for a leak and, uh you know, couldn't find it. If we had had meters attached somewhere uh that we, you know, that we could monitor, uh it would have made it much easier for us to determine where the remaining water was coming from. Unoccupied houses. Uh we have a lot of houses in town who are uh that are unoccupied. Uh many of those and uh and the town thanks you very much for your commitment. Many of those homes uh have come to the town and have had the water in those houses uh shut off. Um we ask that all of those who have vacant homes, homes that are closed up um to come to the town. It's at no cost. Uh the in the staff will come and shut off your water. And if down the road you want the water uh turned back on, then it's only uh, you know, an easy process of going to turn it back on. Uh rather than having water running in in the hut house uh to ensure that the it doesn't freeze. For one thing, uh if you have insurance on your home and you leave water on and something happens, your insurance won't be covered. And the other is, of course, if you do happen to get a a water leak or a pipe break, uh your home could very easily be destroyed. It costs an awful lot of money then to uh to repair. And we say the same thing about unattended homes. Uh you know, people who are working away, who go away for longer than a month or on vacation for longer than a a month. We do have a town policy uh that says um homes vacant for longer than four weeks must be registered at the town office as having their water shut off. Now, many people who go away will phone the town and ask the town to shut off their water, uh you know, which is fine, that gives us a record. Some people have uh shut off valves inside their home. And as far as I know, un- unless the um staff tells me different at differently after I do this report, and if they do, then I'll I'll come back to the community and let you know. Some people have uh turn-off valves in their home, and that should work as well. If we put a a listening meter on the curb stop, if the water is turned off in your home, then we should hear no water running. Uh so either one works as long as the water is uh is shut off. Education. Um the town will assist residents in finding uh more information on how to conserve water, and that will start as soon as possible. We have a councillor who has been working at experimenting with different rates of flow, experimenting with um um a water hose uh meter and so on and so forth. And uh soon as this process starts, uh then we will be doing that sort of uh education. Some on the uh BBS uh pamphlets or letters may go out in the mail. Uh has, that has been done in the past. But that we're hoping for a continuous education program that helps make all residents uh more conscious of what we can do to conserve water. Now, the meter, and I'm going to say this again because apparently it has been a major topic on Facebook and uh, uh you know, people have concerns. But we looked at, as I said earlier, uh the idea of of putting in water meters. Other towns have started similar uh processes. As a matter of fact, Newfoundland, as far as I know, is the only province who doesn't use a water meter system. Uh but on the news recently, maybe because of the installation of these types of uh water plants, um towns such as uh Paradise, St. Phillips, Torbay, uh the city of Cornerbrook have been looking at taking uh similar steps. And um and as I say, we did investigate the cost of four hundred and twenty-five dollars to purchase and then having it installed by an electrician because it has to be tied into a fuse panel. Now, this is not new. I uh said this, I think, on the last news report that we had. But rather than put that expense on all residents, because we've heard that too, I'm being penalized because uh some residents want to run their water, and that's not fair. So, and we know that there are many who are not running their water. And we know, as I said, there are some who are running it conservatively and, you know, checking their flow and monitoring it uh as they're doing it. Based on that information, we propose the following. The town can create a part-time monitor position. Now, that person's role will be to work with residents on the amount of water. They should be able to, you know, homes should be able to run and um ensure, to the best of our ability, that uh your, you know, that your water pipe is not going to freeze. They can check with you periodically, just, you know, to uh ensure that the flow continues. And then, um you know, residents can be advised whether or not that flow is too much, too little. That person would also then keep council informed as to whose houses have been checked, what the flow rate uh is um for each household. They would be responsible for advising residents as to how to conserve water and the cost of conservation. In other words, you know, whether a saddle valve can be used. Uh they can check the cost of trace heaters for you or insulated pipes or use of insulation or circulation pumps. Any of those things that we know are currently being used in other communities and other provinces to ensure that the water doesn't freeze. Now, this info uh information is, we believe, vital uh to the town. We need to know just how much water we're losing through leaks in our infrastructure, as well as how much water is needed to ensure that uh water pipes and sewer pipes in homes do not freeze. This will allow us as a town to also apply our resources to potentially troubled areas. If we have a specific area in town that has been identified as a challenge for water freezing, uh then we need to do some uh investigation into how we can take corrective measures to ensure that your water doesn't freeze. And as I've said before, um we've been informed unofficially that we only need to run a liter per day, which is about a third of a gallon. And if everyone in town did that, like I pointed out earlier, we would be running two hundred and sixty-six gallons a minute, which would put us in a good stance uh for operating our water treatment plant all year round. Now, we're not sure what the amounts are at at this time. I mean, we know the gallons that we're getting per minute. We suspect that there are certain areas of town that might be, uh you know, have poor soil, shallow berry and those sorts of things, where water, uh we have records of water freezing in the past. So um this is important work, uh we think, uh for a monitor who would be there to say, um I can help, and how is it that you want me to help? And keep the town in uh informed so that we're all working together for, you know, the for the same goal. We don't want to police people. We don't want to, uh you know, have to force people to do things. What we want is to be able to provide good drinking water, and we believe that we can if we work together. Now, some people may say, I do not want um someone coming into my home looking at uh water flow. And that's fine. If you would rather not work with a water monitor, then uh what would be expected of those people is that you install a water meter. And if you install a water meeting uh meter, it means someone um driving past your house and uh, you know, flashing a, I guess, a code gun that would provide us with the water consumption information uh that we that we need. Uh and finally, we're going to revisit our policy on building up new homes. Uh what we want to do with new homes, uh similar, I guess, uh to other municipalities, is to ensure that there's a section on the permit that clearly states uh to the homeowner, all re- and um all replacement and new lines must be inspected. If you're digging up a a water line, uh or if you're building a new home, uh then uh those water lines have to be inspected by town staff uh before the line is covered. And new homes will not be permitted to occupy until the water and sewer lines are inspected and approved by the town. Now, that's not, that's nothing new. If you go to the majority of municipalities in Newfoundland, they have that policy. And so we're going to put it in place here. Our main goal, and I I want to remind uh people of this, our main goal is to provide the best drinking water that we can at the best price we can for the town. Now, if we've missed something, and I mean, there's, you always, uh I suppose, there's always another alternative where someone is listening, who's thinking and comes up with another idea. But if you believe that there's a a better way, another option that hasn't been discussed, then council invites you to come before council, come as a delegation and present your ideas. We ask that you not come to say, don't do it. Uh we just don't want you to do it. Uh because that's unreasonable, I believe, uh for us to say, well, we always ran our water that way, and so that's the way we're going to run it now. That's really not fair to what we know uh this day and age about uh about water and water treatment. Uh the government has taken it seriously enough that they have hired three water treatment specialists in our designated waste management areas, one for eastern, one for central, and one for western, who's working with towns to improve their water system. We've been there. We were on a boil order for years and years and years. Uh we're off the boil order at least uh up until this uh this point in time. And we want to be able not only to maintain that, uh but summer is coming, and with summer, we're going to get, and heat, you know, higher temperatures, we're going to get more biofilm. There's no point in the town trying to clean out those pipes and then uh run our water directly from Long Pond. Uh or try to operate our water treatment plant without using uh the process that's uh that's in it. So I I I believe that most people understand that. Uh so please, if you have an idea that you would like to present to us, and if you don't want to present it to council, talk to one of the councillors. Uh come in and see me. I'm in the office. Um at lea- you know, approximately twenty hours a week, I'm there. Some people have come and sat down and had a chat and have, you know, have given me their thoughts. Their thoughts are reflected in this report. Anyone who's come to me about saddle valves, anyone who's phoned me about uh, uh you know, the use of water, um you know, even to the running of our fire hydrants have, uh you know, have been discussed at the council uh table because we're working really hard uh to try to come up with a solution that's going to be not only convenient, but uh safe uh for the community. We all have a voice. If you don't agree with the plan, you have the option of of running in the upcoming election. Uh you know, if you feel that council is is not doing uh an adequate job. Elections are coming up in September. You can have your voice at the table and create your own plan. But the bottom line for this council, and I don't want to sound uh dictatorial, uh and I don't mean it uh that way. But we strongly believe, the majority of councils strongly believe that we deserve good drinking water and that it's our responsibility to provide it. And we're going to work at doing this, um you know, as long as we can. And if you can help us with that, please let us know. Our next meeting is scheduled for June twenty-first. If you would like to do a presentation, um there's a form that you need to fill out, but other than that, uh you're welcome to come. If you would prefer an around-the-table discussion, because if if you come to a council meeting, of course, there's certain protocol you have to follow in order to, you know, ensure that the meeting um, you know, goes as it's supposed uh to. If you want to come in and have a round-the-table discussion, let me know. I'll invite uh councillors in and invite you in to sit around the council table in in an afternoon and um and have a discussion. Um but like I say, come with ideas. Um if someone said uh to me, we just don't want meters. Well, okay, if you don't want meters, what is it that we can do? Uh because our plan basically says, for the most part, the town doesn't need meters if we work together. And if we follow our other steps, such as using uh the monitor process where we work together, there will be no need for meters. Unless, for example, we find uh in our pilot project that they might be useful, not necessarily on homes, it might be in a section of town, which uh someone has suggested to us. Can you put them somewhere so that there's an indication of where the most water is being run? And so we will learn uh those uh processes if we do a a small pilot. So I thank you for listening and for tolerating. I thank you for listening and for tolerating the uh long-windedness. But I'm hoping that uh, you know, the message itself will uh, you know, maybe lessen some of the anxiety that people might be having about what council is doing. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.